Call to order, the city council work session for East Grand Forks for Tuesday, May 28th. It's now five o'clock. City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Yander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel. Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Reapell.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark DeMars.
Present.
Does turn. Number one, request for issuance of industrial development revenue bonds for American Crystal Sugar Company. Mr. Holstead.
Well, this was put on for me, however, Mr. Stewart and Mr. Lloyd are here today. And to address it, we've done these bonds in the past. I'm not exactly sure the depth of the project, if you want to just come forward and answer any questions or discuss it. So that that council has a little bit of extra.
Eric, you want to make sure the mics are on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jim Stewart. I'm an attorney with Arnes and Stewart and Wagner in Fargo. We're representing American Crystal Sugar Company as bond counsel. They are requesting the city to issue bonds under the Industrial Development Act to finance the acquisition and installation of some new pulp presses at the East Grand Forks factory. Lloyd Kennedy is the factory manager and can tell you about the project. I can tell you about the bonds. I look back in our records and the city of East Grand Forks has done eight different financings for American Crystal over the last eighteen or nineteen years. These bonds are issued under the State's Industrial Development Act, which allows the city to issue bonds on behalf of a for-profit company so that they can get the advantage of a lower interest rate through a tax-exempt bond. Under that act, the city doesn't have any liability. All of the payments on the bonds are the responsibility of American Crystal. If you have any other questions relating to the bonds, I'd be happy to answer them. Or if you have questions relating to the project, Lloyd can answer those.
There.
It's probably for you and Mrs. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, but wouldn't affect our bond rating at all, would it?
No.
Participate, yeah.
It does not. Because it's an obligation of American Crystal, it doesn't reflect on the city either positively or negatively.
Do you have any questions at all?
The health of American Crystal Sugar does reflect on our bond rating because of its, the amount that it, the percentage share of its tax capacity, I guess, is relevant to the city of East Grand Forks, so.
That and the usage of electricity.
True.
Actually, our bond rating went up.
I guess one thing I would add to that then, so if, yeah, if the council doesn't have any real questions about the project or the bond rating, like you said, we've done this in the past for American Crystal, most recently it was in 2015. So the timing that, the schedule that we have for us would, this would then move forward to, for formal approval of the resolution on June 4th, and that resolution would then call for a public hearing on July 2nd. And then after the public hearing, then the council could take formal action on that, but not before then.
I guess I'd say one more thing about the project. Thanks for investing in East Grand Forks. It's a big deal. We love it.
Anybody have any questions then, for them?
Would any of this help with the odor problems?
Not directly. This is specifically targeted at reducing the amount of pulp that we have to haul offsite. It allows us to process that pulp and turn it into pellets to sail, but it's not directly related to any water issues. And I'm not aware of any odor issues that we've been having, so, no, it's not related to that.
You know other questions, sir? Appreciate it. I think that's it, right? Anybody else, no one else had anything?
Good.
Okay. I think we're good, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Move on to number two, request for assistance for manufacturing expansion. Mr. Gordy, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you. I'm here, yes. I'm here with Mike Delisle, who is the chief honcho, the head honcho over at Mayo Manufacturing. And he, once again, has some good news for us, and that is expanding his business, adding a 70,000 square foot facility, which mirrors the one that he added about.
Eighty-four hundred. Eighty-four hundred feet.
Eighty-four hundred?
Square feet.
Okay.
Eighty-four hundred.
But it's expanding the building that he built a few years ago. It's heading out toward the county road, so he has plenty of land to do it. And he will add five employees. The cost of the construction is a little bit over $600,000. He is applying, seeking revolving loan funds through the EDA. He's also seeking funds from the state in form of a MIF loan. We haven't done one of those in many, many years. And that procedure is interesting, to say the least. He will also fund about half of the project through privately financed activities. The procedure that we're going to be going through, and I gave Mr. Murphy the calendar, tonight is an introduction. There are a couple of things that are required by deed that I'd like to be able to proceed with. They are some, a business credit review, and they also involve a financial review. EDA at its meeting today said for me to proceed, but I'd like to have you assent to that as well, just to get those. They are inputs into the process and what we have to submit to deed. And without those, it will delay the application to deed for funding and will delay the project, which I would prefer not to do. And which I'm sure Mr. Delisle would prefer not to do as well. So that is tonight. Next week are public hearings. Both assistance, both loans require public hearings. We were able to combine the public hearings into one public hearing. The public notice was actually prepared by council to accomplish that, to make sure it was adequate to the task. Those will be held next week. And next week, there will be a resolution that says you give preliminary approval to go ahead and seek the funds from deed. When that is done, I have to obtain the, I will have to get a copy of the minutes, and I will have to put, make sure everything is together on the application. We will then submit it to deed. Mr. Delisle's people have been superb to work with and have provided me with most of the information. The application, as you saw, was two parts, one that we do and one part that the company does to submit to deed. And I have just about all the information that I need from the company and from ourselves as well. There are just a couple of those financial reports. And Mr. Delisle is here in case you have any other questions.
Just kind of give our review too, is the reason why you're here is that deed requires more things than we do as an EDA.
Yes.
Those steps they have to take to require more authorization from the city to move forward. And that's, it's not because of EDAs, but because deed requires, so it's something that.
That's correct.
It pulls you to jump through.
There are certain documents that, Mr. Delisle has looked at me and said, really? Okay. And I said, yes, I mean, there are things that we don't necessarily require. We've worked with Mr. Delisle in the past, and we have information. But deed does not, and they request things, they require things that we do not. So we have to follow their process on this.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gordy or?
I might have missed it. How many jobs are we looking at creating with this, any at all, or?
We're looking to add five.
Starting salary is looking at $17 to $30 per hour, as I recall.
Go ahead. Just two things. Like Crystal, thanks for investing in East Grand Forks. Number two, Paul, thanks for taking care of existing businesses. Sometimes the knock on EDA, they spend all their resources trying to bring new businesses into town, many of them competing with businesses already here. But you have a long history of doing both, you know, bringing in the new business, but also taking care of the ones that have roots in the ground. You guys have been here all your lives. Glad to see that we can partner with you also in building your business.
1952 is when Mayo began business.
Yep.
East Grand Forks.
Good stuff.
It's a long, long relationship with a primary business, a good business.
I haven't been there that long.
What's wrong with that? I have been. Helms? I think the other thing on this deal with Mr. Delisle is he wants to get this thing approved. I don't know if Paul touched on it or not, I didn't hear everything he said, but is that they'd like to get groundbreaking this year yet, if you can correctly.
Yes.
So he wants to kind of get this moved through so they could get started on this, so.
And we're driven by the deed schedule, so, and Mike and I have talked about that and what we have to do to accomplish things. But we're driven by the deed calendar, when public hearings have to be done, and how much time, and the particular documents they require, and when they're going to be available.
Mark Holstead.
I just wanted just to, I know it seems like the process is a little bit backwards, and that's by design by deed, to make sure that they've got preliminary approval from the city before they actually ask for approval, final approval. So we need to get the information ahead of time to show that we have an appetite as a city to go forward before they're going to invest a lot more time and energy into it. So we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, so to speak, when it comes to getting these resolutions and preliminary approval and public hearings to make sure that we're willing to go forward. So I just wanted that for the group.
Future steps include the loan committee from the EDA reviewing this and making recommendations. And when we get all the final documents back from deed, and those are standard documents from deed, they will have to go back to council for approval. We are getting the public hearing portion out of the way now, so we do not have to repeat a public hearing. But the EDA will make recommendations, and the city council will make the final actions on the loans.
Wonderful. Any males have any questions at this time? Mr. Delisle, you have anything to say, offer? Do you have any questions for us, sir?
I don't have any questions. I just appreciate the, what the city's been doing, what Paul, the effort he's been putting in. The original building that we're adding on to was built in 2012, and we went through a lot of the same process as then. The city came forward with low-interest assistance, which made it possible for us to put that one up. And it was built at the time by Weber and Sons so that it could be expanded. One of the north walls is actually not in like a normal wall would be. It's made to expand, because we knew at that time that we would be expanding at a later date. So seven years later, yeah, here we are. So I'm just saying, I appreciate what the city did for us then, and looking forward to what they can do for us now.
And one other thing, we expect to come back and try to utilize some of the border cities' tax credits for this project. That will not have to happen until toward the end of summer. We would need to know how many tax credits we have, and that is still pending down in St. Paul at this point. The other thing on that is what we're going to do is structure it so that when the structure comes up to full value, Mr. Delisle and Mayo Manufacturing can get the full benefit of that rather than just a partial benefit. So that's important.
Good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Number three, consider petition for paving the street, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. Yes, I believe, Mr. Bushy is here. We received a petition to pave, it would be Sixth Avenue Northeast. From Fourth Street Northeast, tentatively to where the railroad tracks are right now. We received the petition that was signed by the two adjoining property owners that constitute the majority of the northern section of what would be paved. We haven't broken it down by feet in here, but it's between the two property owners that have assigned. It's probably eighty, anywhere from 85 to 90% of the linear footage has been petitioned. So the petition has been signed by A&amp;L Potato and Eric Tompkins, who is the Senior Vice President of Business Development for the property on the west side, which is MGI Grain Processing. So when we receive a petition, first thing we do is take a look at it, see if it's a project that seems worthwhile. At that point, then, if it does, we would move it forward to the next council meeting. And then the council would author, would direct the city engineer to provide a, do a feasibility report on, estimate the costs, timelines, what's all needed for that, that type of thing. So with that, Mr. Bushy, if you could, if you would like to step up to the council there? If you could just take a moment and kind of let them know as far as what brought this forward and what you're looking for out of this project?
Well, if anybody is familiar with our street over there, it's pretty much a landmine right now to drive into. Interstate towing really likes us, because we've been having to pull a lot of trucks in and out this year.
Maybe there should be, there's a picture of what it looks like out there today in your package.
Yeah. You know, when you're trying to do business like what our next-door neighbor is, Pearling Grain, plus ourselves, we're pounding a lot of semi-traffic in and out of there on a day-to-day basis, and, you know, we just can't have the limitations. And this decision was going to be done 20 years ago until I got the bill on 7th. And, you know, basically my assessments and stuff will be completed pretty quick on 7th. So I was kind of waiting to have a little extra funds left that I'm not paying $20,000 bucks a year over on the other street and this street. So I imagine it takes a year or two by the time the full billing process gets caught up to, and it'll be completed on 7th by then, so. My expectations, if we could get the road shaved down this year, allow it to go through a freeze-and-thaw cycle, you know, get, cut it, what is it, you cut it a couple of feet below grade, put down matting, come back with crushed aggregate. You know, I think the sewer work is done, most of the, you know.
Yeah, I think. Plumbing aspects. Sewer, PVC, the water main was just done in like 2001. You know, the only thing I could see for really potential underground work, I believe, is if we have to, you know, extend any storm sewer for drainage purposes.
Yeah, I don't think it comes past the corner of four down there.
No. And I think when we did 7th, we had to kind of extend that storm, you know, for drainage purposes too, so.
Yeah.
It's something we're going to have to look at, you know. The only other utility that I know that's in there, and I don't know if that would be outside the street corridor right at the moment, but there is a, like a 12-inch force man that I believe comes from the water plant there that's ACP or whatever. So maybe that's something we want to look at. The last thing we want to do is put a road over it and then have problems. So we just may want to see if we can locate it, see if it's going to be within the road corridor. Otherwise, I think, you know, it's pretty straightforward project.
Mr. Bushy, you had, when we spoke on the phone before, you indicated that you're thinking about just going to where the railroad tracks are?
Just to the north side of the railroad tracks.
And I guess I should have followed up, is there a specific reason why you're looking at just going that far, or is there?
Well, you know, if you, I don't know if it shows it in the picture well enough, but there's two sets of tracks there. One set is not hooked up. You know, we probably could talk to the railroad and getting that removed and filling into the south section. But, you know, that portion of the road isn't busting up. It's really not giving us any grief there. I mean, yeah, would it be better? Sure. But it's not a deal breaker if we just went from there south, you know.
Okay. I guess the only thing I'd say then too is that moving, if we go to the railroad tracks, it would potentially involve one more property, one that has not, hasn't really been contacted about signing off on that, so we don't really know where their opinion is on that. But if we would go to Business Highway 2, that would involve another property owner as well. So there potentially could be two more.
And I would have no interest, I mean, I don't own any of the property down there.
Yeah.
You know. They might have interest in it. I mean, it's Barkott and Northland Cabinets. I mean, you might want to ask them, maybe they'd have an interest in doing it too, you know. Concrete has a value.
Yeah, I guess, no, I'm just making the council aware that if we go there, we'd have to contact them and.
Right.
So what, what process or what are you looking for from us on just getting a sub-speed in the process, or are you?
Yeah, for this, to see if, first of all, to see if there's any interest in the council in pursuing this. And if there is, then what we do is the next council meeting, I would have a agenda item before the council to authorize WSN to perform a feasibility study for the project.
Can we look at both, to the tracks and to?
Yes. Yep.
And maybe these individuals will sign off? I mean, that's what you would really want, is for each affected one to sign off on the petition.
Ultimately, I mean, if you have 100% signatures.
You don't have to have a public.
You don't have to hold the first improvement hearing. If we don't get 100%, then we're just going to have to hold that first improvement hearing.
But yeah, but typically, the good reason to get the feasibility study, of course, is then we get a kind of an estimate of what the assessments are going to be, because it's usually pretty difficult to get people to sign off on it with, before they know what the, what the cost is going to be.
Mr. Helms?
Mr. Bushy, is the south side of that railroad tracks, is that pavement already from Business 2? Is there pavement up to that?
There's a little bit of tar there.
Tar?
But it's kind of cut out and broke up.
Is it?
It could definitely improve, I mean, you know. But we're not having to call tow trucks, the trucks are stuck at that end, you know. So, and probably 95% of the trucks are never going to go to that side of the road. We do the majority of the business at the north end of that road.
Yeah, you got.
You know, by having access with concrete at that end, pretty much minimalizes how much will be transpiring at the other end. But, I mean, I would look at, if they wanted to do that, that'd be great. I mean, but I don't think it's a necessity, you know, to the conditions that we have to the north of that, you know, so.
Yeah, everybody's got some real issues this year on.
Well, I mean, it's a tough year this year.
It's bad. I've never seen it so bad.
The one thing that I really want to work with Steve a little bit on is elevations, you know, because our transition from our parking lot to the street, you know, we don't want to see a seven-foot drop or some, something like that, because the way we park, we've already got some concrete existing there, you know. We'd hate to have it so steep that the cars are bottoming out to come up and down, which I don't think that would be the case, but, you know. I know 7th got shaved down quite a ways.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Mr. DeMars?
Thank you, Mr. President. Has Thorson been contacted on this, or?
Who was that?
Or not? Yeah, Ron Thorson?
Well, Ron sold that property to, it would be Russ Halverson.
Halverson?
Yeah.
Has anybody contacted them?
I have not talked to him. But, you know, where I'm proposing cutting the street off is about, we wanted to cut it off at the property line, that'd be fine. So, because it's just barely past that is where the railroad tracks are.
I guess at that point, we would certainly take a look at what it would be like to go all the way to 2nd. And we would know what the cost was, and then we would certainly contact them.
I think our primary goal should be a full street all the way.
Correct, yeah. That's always what our main goal is, yeah.
But I can reach out to Russ and Justin, find out their feelings, and I could talk to Northland, so.
Good. Any males have any questions? Honor bring it next week, so we can.
Yep, for a feasibility study.
Good. Appreciate it. Any males or?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move number four and five around so we can get into the request to rent Civic Center Beer Craft Show. Mr. Reed Henneman.
All right. Thank you, sir. Michael Brooks and Hannah Carlson are here from Leighton Broadcasting as well, if you have any questions for them on anything. But if you recall, last year, they organized and hosted a craft beer show just kind of outside up North Pizza in the VFW Club in the fall. And they've come back this year and requested they'd like to look at renting the Civic Center to host, I think, a similar event as what they hosted last year outside, and hopefully be able to get away from some of the weather issues that we had last year the day of the event. So I've been in communication with them a little bit over the last few months, just with some of the event details. And I think that it's something that the Civic Center could feasibly handle. It's set up very similar, if you've ever been in the arena for the Arts and Craft Show. It's a very similar setup to that with basically tables, the vendors all inside the main ice arena floor itself. So that provides a nice place to be able to kind of have control and containment a little bit of the beer tasting that would be going on. It'd be the responsibility of Leighton and their organizing team to be able to completely manage, you know, the security aspects of it, the event operations, the, certainly the ticketing, the beer, however you do deal with the IDs and the alcohol permitting, all of that. So I haven't really delved into any of the details as far as what they would need from the city and through the state for the alcohol side of things. And I know Megan would certainly be able to help them with that when the time comes. I was just more looking at building logistics and whether or not I think it's something that we could do for that. I think it, I think certainly the building could host an event like this if all of you feel the same way. So with that, I think I'll just pass it off for questions, if you have anything for Michael or Hannah.
Anybody have any questions at all? Mike, do you have anything for us? Hannah, anything?
Any, and maybe it's here, projected number of attendees?
Yeah, we would project 500 to 1,000.
Okay, up to 1,000?
Yeah, up to 1,000. We do events in multiple markets in Minnesota, Winona, St. Cloud, Detroit Lakes, and Fergus Falls. So we track the numbers. It could grow a little bit after that, but yeah, it'll be somewhere in there, I think.
Any else have any questions? If not, we'll move it on for next week's rule. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Move back to number four, review of the plan for Lefebvre Park area. Mister and.
Thank you, Mr. President.
For the large picture.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of at your request, got you a copy of the, I guess, preliminary master plan. Just even got the drawings to Reed here this morning. So Reed and I haven't even really had a chance to sit down and kind of iron out even some of the final details. But again, wanted to have something, you know, Reed and whoever's meeting with, kind of the Explore Minnesota Group tomorrow, could at least kind of, you know, be able to show the potential that this property does provide. Not real necessarily nice looking down there right now, so I think kind of just, you know, something to show the potential will be good. So right now, you know, again, just kind of showing kind of a proposed parking area there adjacent to basically the two new boat ramps that we'd probably be looking at doing. I think overall, just with what we're showing right now, just for some additional multi-use trails through the area, I think kind of connect nicely with some of the existing trails we have in that vicinity. As well as, you know, we're kind of showing a, kind of an access road, kind of going through the entire Lefebvre Park area there with kind of a parking area there that'll eventually go down to kind of a fishing dock, fishing pier. Reed did tell me that, I think, the fishing dock pier that he has, it has kind of, it's kind of a combined fishing dock, kayak launching area. So kind of what we're showing there right now isn't exactly correct, but it kind of just gives you again, an idea of what we could do. Right now, our landscape architect is showing, you know, most of that area, kind of an established meadow. I don't think, you know, we'd probably go that direction. I think we'd have probably more area that, you know, we'd be able to mow, maintain, and, you know, probably have some specific areas that we'd want to have some of this meadow grass and stuff. But again, just, you know, something preliminary right now. So, you know, as we work towards a final product too, I guess if you guys have any ideas that you would like to see, you know, let Reed or I know. And then I think once, you know, kind of as promised too, once we get kind of a finished master plan, you know, we'll put together some cost estimates and stuff, what it would take to develop this. So as Reed too applies for any, you know, grant dollars, that type of stuff, you know, we would know kind of what dollar amounts we need to kind of apply for, so, for the different programs, so.
Just a couple of things if I could add to it. In discussing with this with Steve and with their landscape architect, for the, kind of the May 29 deadline we had, knowing the visit was scheduled, we really looked a lot at the boat ramp area and the parking lot area. We didn't spend as much time looking at the greater Lefebvre Park area to the east. Reminder, the kayak launch that Steve referenced, that's a floating dock kayak launch that we actually already have approval for. Reminder, the kayak launch that Steve referenced, that's a floating dock kayak launch that we actually already have approval for funding for. We applied for that last spring in the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails funding and were approved. So that'll be, it needs to be finalized still, I believe, with the state legislature. I don't know if that's been voted on yet or not down there. I haven't paid that close of attention to it. But that part of it would already be, we already have funding for that. The location needs to move a little bit closer to the Red River, away from where that rock dam is. You can tell outside even referenced on this picture. And then the only other comment that I would have before anyone else has a chance is the lower trail. Those of you that remember years ago, we had a lower paved trail that went through that area and opted to get rid of that because of the issue of flooding. That comment hasn't been passed on to WSN yet, so that would be one that right away, just getting a look at this today, I would think we'd probably stay away from pouring a, having a paved trail through that lower section just because we've already been down that road and found that it didn't work, so.
Any else have any? Mr. Holmes.
I like the concept. I I if we can just get it to look nice like this. But the issue I, the only issue I see with it, I think, once we get that looking nice like that, there's not a lot of parking spaces there.
Right.
I know parking spaces cost money, but I think 16's parking spaces is not gonna be near enough if we ever get that thing to where we'd like to see it.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's kind of a balance, cuz like you said, that's gonna be the expensive part. So yeah, that's a discussion we're gonna have to have. You know, we know if we get the governor fishing opener, I mean, we know we're not gonna have enough parking spaces, but I mean, that's kind of a one-time deal too, so we don't wanna go too crazy, but there's gonna be a balance there.
But I think even this year, if we got this to where we'd like to see it,
Yep.
I think this would look, this would take off just like the state park did, the campground. I really do. I think it would really go over big. And so that's the one thing I was looking at that.
Well, I agree. I think if you improve your facilities down there, you're gonna just draw that many more people to it too, so yeah.
Just the one thing to note on that on parking that we have talked about is that the original Lefave Park concept that that I brought forward when we wanted to have WSN put paper to this, kind of on the higher area, right under the bubble that says established meadow, that's a high, like, a high-ground, flat grass space. In that plan, that area is designated as overflow parking. And then then the other spots you have, if you go back to the north of the railroad bridge, that parking lot is relatively nearby that doesn't get used very often. And the Griggs Park Trailhead, right on the dry side of the levee, as well as a parking, big parking lot that doesn't get used a whole heck of a lot, so. I think even in the immediate area, there's there's some parking spaces there that we probably, we just wanna make sure we don't forget about as we're looking at the total cost of all this.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, the only thing I'll bring up again is the, you know, this is all nice, but there's no bathrooms. You know, when we we brought up the porta potty thing, now come on, Governor, you know, welcome to East Grand Forks, and here's the best we can do here.
Well, and one thing we're gonna have to be a little bit careful of too is, you know, putting any type of structures, anything down there. I mean, it is within the floodplain, so, you know, kind of a bridge or we'd have to cross if that's, you know, something.
We hit the campground is in the floodplain, when there's a bathroom down there. I mean, there's surely, if we're gonna do something this nice, why not make it nicer?
Yeah.
Difference with that, there was a state to put that there and not us.
Right.
They could do what they want.
Eric.
When we think about putting together funding package, I would sure hope the DNR is is prominent in the funding. And I don't know if we could work through MPO Earl Haugen, if there would be any other sources of funding for anything. This is gonna take a co-mingling, I think, of lots of different funding sources, not not local funding exclusively, maybe even not primarily local funding. There's gotta be money out there.
Just the the, I think the biggest potential funding sources off the top of our heads is the legacy dollars through the Minnesota DNR. Those are accessible through the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission funding application. That's that's the group that, or the the funding source that funded the kayak launch that we had funded this last year. So just a reminder for everybody on that, that the application or process we're in right now, that would be due end of July of this year, end of July 2019, and we're applying, if we go that route, we're applying for fiscal year 2021. So that grant period wouldn't begin until July 1st, 2021, just as we're talking timing of what do we wanna see of this and construction? If we want to use the legacy dollars funding source, we're already out to that date. I think, you know, Chief Larson is out, but one thing we talk a lot about that I think is another potential source is is as a storm shelter. Potential funding to talk about bathrooms, anything like that, if there's a way to find high ground there that we can fit a storm shelter that could service the campground at the same time, that's a need that we've had for many years and haven't been able to answer, and if that's another way that can help bring the DNR in, recognizing it's it's not necessarily on the campground property, but it's nearby. It's a whole new level of federal funding that we haven't been able to get into yet, so.
Beagle.
Reed, remind me, did we put in some sort of barriers to keep them from going off of that that drive-through area?
Yeah, that's part of the idea with this. The trees, I think, if you look at the the street lined with trees right now, that's the way it's conceptually showing. But we discussed that with the landscape architect is is basically, if you wanna keep cars on the road and off of the green space, you should have them spaced every five feet. You can't feasibly space trees every five feet, so we'd have to look at doing some wooden barriers or some landscape rocks, something of that nature as well. But that's been part of our discussion, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, trying to remember the discussions involving the trail, you know, as it approaches the river. I don't remember exactly why we determined that that trail was out. If it was because it was in disrepair, if it was too hard to maintain because of the mud or what, but I would be I would have, I have a hard time just letting it go. I think, I don't want it, I don't think we want it to become, I'll speak for myself. I don't want it to become a car-accessible-only spot. And I think, you know, one of the best things we can do is have that accessible to pedestrians, bicyclists, all those type of things. If we can think of, you know, we got Steve here, he's a smart engineer, we can think about, you know, drainage down there, those type of things. I think part of the problem in the past has been we haven't had any control down there, and there's been cars driving on those bike paths, and they're just so shot that we never did. Now, I understand that if you get mud on there, you gotta go up there and and, you know, sweep it off or scrape it off or whatever. But I think if we can build that, like Mr. Helm said, if we can develop this spot, you make it somewhere nice, somewhere that people can take pride in self-police somewhat, I don't see any reason why we don't enhance that trail down there and keep that part of the plan. Like I said, there is a cost to rebuilding that and all that stuff too, but I just, taking that out of there, all of a sudden, it just becomes a road. And then that's what it is, and I don't think that that's something that people really want down there.
And I and I agree. I think that's kinda what happened with with the last one, is I mean, it just kinda turned into a a trail for vehicles and, you know, so. I agree. I mean, I think, you know, much of this area, I mean, every spring, I mean, even the road there, I don't know elevation-wise, are we gonna get it high enough that I think even the road itself is gonna probably flood out almost every spring, so. I mean, it's gonna take, it's like anything else, it's gonna take some maintenance to keep it nice, but I personally agree with you. I like the trail down there, but.
That's, and that's the reason for my comment, maybe to clarify, is that I suggested that it shouldn't be a paved trail and maintenance being the reason for that. It's any of the trails that end up underwater for a few days, even a week at a time, you can go take a look, they're they're decaying faster than the trails we have that don't go underwater. And that's my reason. I think it could still be a trail. It could it could be a gravel trail that could be drug after the water recedes maybe and still be used for walking. Maintenance being a part of this conversation for our department and I think for the city as a whole is if we improve this, we've gotta be able to maintain it at the same time. So that that that's was my reason for concern over having a paved trail that low, just off the top of my head, the first that I looked at this.
Eric.
I know back in there, I was back through there many, many times when the trail was still active. And we had some unstable soils, maybe from saturation in a flood event, and like slippage of the shoreline where you'd have like a one-foot vertical change on the trail, and how do you maintain that? And so either the trail would have to come up to more stable soils, or if it's gravel, you can smooth that back out in between. But yeah, they were, it it just sheared at different points, and that obviously, that's not a trail anymore. That's something else.
Mr. Golsd.
I think, and I don't know if this is anybody else's recollection, but I think the first person that I would get involved is the Army Corps of Engineers. Because if my recollection serves me correctly, we cannot put any additional impervious land surface or surface, asphalt, concrete, on the wet side of the levee. The reason we had, we are able to maintain some of that stuff in the park and the road going up for the baseball fields is it was an existing road, and so I'd wanna make sure that they're on board right away with allowing us to do any of this stuff. Or we could get way down the road and have the plug pulled immediately. And I know that they're not allowing us to do any type of structures, permanent structures. We ran into that with just the kayak boat house that we wanted to put down on, so I'm not trying to rain on anybody's parade, but I think we need to look at that first because that could be a big detriment to doing any of that type of asphalt or concrete. Maybe asphalt's considered impervious. I don't know, but.
No, we, I mean, that's a very good point, Mr. Golsd. I do I do remember, and to be honest with you, I don't know which properties were, but these, I remember properties were bought with these Section 404 funds or whatever they they couldn't have impervious, so very good comment.
And I and I don't even know if it was just the 404 funds. I'm I'm not sure if it was 404 or anything on the wet side of the levee because it, you know, potentially could increase any type of flow of of water downstream.
One thing I should mention, I remember Reed and I talked about the restroom facilities and all, it's kinda coming back to it. I think, you know, right uphill street there, we have that restroom facility that was put in there, kind of part of the core project.
Small.
It doesn't get utilized really, so I I think that was the thought Reed initially was, you know, we have a restroom facility kind of up uphill street there, and, you know, like Mr. Golsd said too, I think, you know, putting structures within the floodplain too there is gonna be a challenge, so. But it, I mean, it's definitely something we can continue to pursue.
You bet.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. After the waters receded this year, there are boulders and concrete that looks like curb from that, and I can't believe that those floated in. So is the soil all washed away and all that stuff is just popping out now?
I don't know. Our our theory on that is that it, Jason and I have talked a lot about it, that it it's the ice on the riprap along the shore, when the ice freezes around that, and then the ice lifts before it gets a chance to melt when the river finally breaks up and the ice melts. That's really the only thing we can deduct that could possibly cause it. It's bizarre.
Where all that stuff came from, but again, you're gonna have that in the future if you have a huge flood event. Again, all that stuff is gonna be down there even if you have a meadow, so.
Right, absolutely.
Anybody else have anything?
Any suggestions, comments? Like I said, just communicate with Reed and I. We're, you know, we're gonna shoot, hopefully in the next few weeks, maybe try to finalize this thing and then start putting some numbers to it, so. Thank you for your input.
Thank you so much.
It's a good start.
Uh, move on to number six, discussion on bike share program. Mr. Murphy, ready?
Yeah, I guess I'll just take a quick, you know, we just got these today. This is the updated mapping of where the dock stations would most likely go. So I guess with that, I know we we looked at this, was that right before you got here? Yeah. Yeah, so it predates Reed, but this was looked at prior between the city of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. It did not materialize. They have been working with a new company, Zagster, and they are moving forward with this, and it looks like they're pretty serious about getting it implemented here this year. So with that, they're looking at the city of East Grand Forks to participate with this. We've had a couple of meetings between staff and between the city of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks, and this is where we're at. They were, right now, they're looking at two potential docking stations here in the city of East Grand Forks. They're looking at sponsoring bike docking stations at 3,500 a year. And what they're looking at right now is for the city itself to sponsor one docking station in the city of East Grand Forks at 3,500. The other one would be a private sponsor that they are searching for. Reed, is there anything else that you wanna add to that that I missed?
I think you hit on it. That was the biggest request that I was, I recall, was just the sponsorship request and that they're looking at two locations in East Grand Forks.
Grand Forks is 12,000 for their total project for all theirs?
That's, this wasn't the latest.
Then 10 another year and 12 another year.
They want 3,500 for us for one?
Yes.
How about we let them do it for a couple of years, see if it works, and then we'll take a look at it, and proportionately, we'll give them maybe $500 for one.
You actually get two?
About 500 plus someone else sponsors another 500.
Wow.
Any else, Mr. Reed? No. Mr. Murris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Has this gone through EDA?
Yeah.
I I would think that that would be the proper avenue for this. This is a business, and they're looking to start their business. I don't know if, granted, it does serve somewhat of a public use, but really, I would say that if they're looking for funding, they should go through EDA. They should look at partnering if they wanna get sponsorship with the businesses that it will be serving. Maybe work out something like that. Personally, because I I always wonder what the business model is behind these, and I think that's the proper venue for that hearing is to talk about, well, what, how are you making money? Are you just making money on the subsidy for three years and then gonna pull out, or how? How is that gonna work? I just, I don't see anybody here that's here to ask for money, so I'm not willing to shell it out right now. Like I said, I I would look at something on on more of a private side partnership than a public side right now, anyway. And if 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 it has something, I know they talk a little bit about policy, if we wanna create some policy that allows for placement of this on public right-of-way or, you know, in our sidewalk areas, I would be very willing to work on that kinda thing, but I'm not willing to subsidize a business straight with cash. We didn't, we just had a business, local business in here that we're offering loans to. If we want, if they wanna take out a low-interest loan, I think it would be a great spot for that too, so. We're not giving our local businesses just cash handouts either. Thank you.
Johnson.
The only comment I had, I read there was like 75 to 80 bicycles, and then there's 25 docking stations. That's like three bikes a docking station, and well, who knows at night, maybe they'll be over here and cinema and I mean, that seems like a lot of money for for six bikes, $3,500 a year.
Mr. Golsd.
I'll let Mr. Helms go first. The only the only comment I was gonna have is is that previous, I I haven't been to any of the meetings regarding this group, but I was to a couple of meetings regarding the other group. And essentially, what they were doing is they were going to allow East Grand Forks to be a participant without actually being involved in the 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 entire cost to set up a business in East Grand Forks. So what they were doing is they were allowing the city of East Grand Forks to have one or two docking stations as opposed to having to go through and and be a participant in getting them to establish a separate business over in East Grand Forks. And not not saying. And not, not saying that they can't do what you're saying, Mr. Demers, but that was the primary reason for them not coming over here and addressing the city council and asking them to put a business in, in, in East Grand Forks.
Thank you, Mr. President. The problem I have with it is that we're investing money and getting absolutely no return on it. And with the stuff we've got coming down the line that we're going to have to do to our residents here with taxes and everything else, I don't think we should be invested in a bike program. It's my, my opinion. So if it comes to the council as a vote, I'll be voting no on it.
Any other questions?
I do agree it's economic development, if anything. I would think, I could be wrong, but I would think the majority of their customers would be of the tourist variety. Most of our local residents have their own bicycles. So we're inviting folks from outside the area to come in and fully utilize the greenway, probably getting into restaurants and other things. So it's more economic development, I think. And again, I, big, big advocate of using the greenway. Boy, I think everybody should be out there several times a week. It's just so good, from the habitat to the exercise to just everything good that happens there. But if, if it's anything at all, it's economic development and if the EDA has a funding source for it, great, but I don't think as a council either that we need to be part of it.
Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, and I guess, and those comments are fine. I mean, it's, it's, this is a policy decision, it's completely up to the council whether we want to pursue this or not. The one thing I will elaborate a little bit on some of the discussion that we had with the city of Grand Forks and as far as staff and what we're looking at on this. One of the docking stations would be somewhere along, we're looking somewhere along the Blue Moose area, close to the campground. And that was one, one area where we thought it would be beneficial for the city of East Grand Forks, would be for the campground visitors, particularly if they have like the motorhome where they, where they drive in and they don't have the vehicle that they could take off. This would give them an opportunity to explore a little bit further, you know, and go around that type of thing. But again, the trade off is, is how much is that worth to the city to do that? So, and the, there's two major funders for this. The first one is, the biggest one is All True. They're the ones that are investing the heaviest in this and are sponsoring the most dock stations. So, and they're looking at other private, private businesses. I know the, the area that they spoke about getting donations for for the second dock station would be the businesses along Restaurant Row there and the cinema and Cabela's and that because they figured out that would be an area that people would use these bikes for as a destination. So that was some of the background in this.
Any more? Reed.
Just the only thing maybe to clarify out of it, I think, just maybe everybody already is understanding, but just hearing the conversation is that I think it's, it's almost, there's two parts to this. One is Zagster, the company that's bringing us to town is asking for a sponsorship. And the other part of it is, is that they're planning to come, they have sponsorship secured already, they're planning to come and they would like to have two of the stations be in East Grand Forks. So I don't think the two are tied hand in hand together. One is asking for sponsorship from the city. The other is, we want to have two stations in East Grand Forks regardless of whether or not there's a sponsorship and we need to make sure that we have everything in mind so that hopefully we can at least have that part of the partnership in place, to David's point of other businesses potentially being able to sponsor that.
Mr. Gordy, inside your organization with your board, is there any provision for such as this?
We approach each business, general philosophy is that approximately one-third is, can be handled in EDA loans. We do not have any grants available. And approximately two-thirds comes from other funding sources, commonly that's one-third private, at least one-third from a private lender and one-third from the company itself. But whatever it is, the EDA is usually limited to one-third of the total, total need and that's usually capped at about 150,000, although that can be adjusted and it has been adjusted when there have been primary businesses involved. So not really, it's very limited. If they need 3,500, for example, that would mean the EDA loan to them would be about $1,200.
Unless you did one-third of three. As an example, you could say, I bring three. Yeah.
But 3,500 isn't necessarily their need, right? I mean, that's what they're asking, so maybe that's already 3,500 of.
It's per year.
Of 10,000 already. But I guess to the mayor's point, sorry for jumping in, but is the EDA set up to go and contact and work with businesses in our downtown to set up a private partnership, a private solicitation?
We would assist any business that's looking for assistance. If they were to ask, we'd work with them. That's just part of what we do.
Mr. Helms.
Thank you. That's the other thing you've got to remember here, they're looking for $3,500 per year and they want a three-year agreement. So it's not just $3,500 we're looking at here. So I think, again, like I said, the only people that's going to benefit on this whole thing is Zagster. They're the only ones going to come out on this.
And the tourists in our area. I mean, to have that service available, it's a positive.
So on, in two sides of this, we're looking at moving forward with allowing a policy for it? Or are we just looking today at, if we are looking at committing to $3,500 a year? What are the two sides of this? I just want to make sure that we're not dropping one of the sides off.
And I guess, I don't know if I want to, I mean, I'll jump in for Reed here on this part, but today we're looking at what the level of interest is from the city council on sponsoring a dock station. I think the policy is something we would need, we're going to need to put together regardless of, of the direction of this. But today we're looking to see if there's any appetite for a sponsorship.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. I think their wording is probably, could have chosen a better word and I think it's more of an advertising plan because their docking station, they're going to have, if the businesses sponsor it, they're going to have advertising on the docking station. So they're really buying advertising. With that being said, I don't know that East Grand Forks wants to advertise on a docking station. It'd be good for businesses to advertise on the docking, docking station. And if you look at their bikes, and apparently All True is sponsoring the bikes or advertising on the bikes with all their name on the bikes and that. So whether that plan includes some of that advertising on the bikes or just the docking station, that'd be a clarification just for businesses in town if they wanted to go that route. But for me personally, I thought I was against it. I think I'm still against it. However, my daughter's in Dallas right now and she just sent me a snapshot of renting a scooter and running around town on a motorized scooter and she said, Eastside needs to get some of these. So I think there's an interest there for some individuals. I just don't know that East Grand Forks wants to get into it.
I'd rather have them look at the private entities and, like you said, I mean, you look at us advertising, exactly. I think that's my opinion. I would not vote to say we could do it at a city level.
All right, I guess what I'm gathering then is to, from the consensus is I'd say the majority would be that we are okay with the idea as long as we can get private sponsorship for it.
Actually, we love the idea.
Yes.
Absolutely love the idea of them coming in and doing this. Just hard to justify spending our taxpayer dollar on it.
Okay.
I'd direct them to Mr. Gordy's office.
Okay. We'll stick them on you. All right. Number seven, consider approval of lease agreement, Mr. Gordy.
The Mike's Pizza lease that was approved three years ago includes a reopener for the lease rate after three years have been concluded. And it gave a window for discussing that lease rate with Mike's Pizza. When that window opened, I started talking with Sherri Arns, who is the owner manager at Mike's Pizza. I told her what we've been trying to do is bring the rents up in the infield building to what we were told the market rate was. We talked with other building owners in the area, it's $10 per square foot. She was eight, at $8.75 per square foot. She has acknowledged that that, that she's willing to do that and in fact, the lease is written so that the rates will go up to $9 per square foot this year and go up to nine and a quarter per square foot next year. And she knows that we will continue to increase the lease rate over time to reach the $10 per square foot basis. What she did ask us however, is because of the Demers project, if she could defer the higher lease rate until that project is done. EDA recommended November 1st. We have a calendar of dates for the Demers project and it shows a projected completion date in mid-November, so that falls in line with that. The EDA thought that was, like I said, a reasonable request, so they have asked the lease be written up for a November 1st start date for the $9 per, per square foot rate and that'd be June 1st next year for the $9.25 per square foot rate. The other thing, and it's not actually related because it's not part of the lease, but it is part of what's coming up, is she has asked that the cleaning allowance be adjusted to $600 per month. It has been, oh, I don't remember offhand, I'm drawing a blank.
425.
I'm sorry?
425, I believe.
Something like that. I don't remember exactly. And I, you know, fortunately on the EDA, we have an expert in, in the cleaning business. So I consulted with him and he said that this is a good, this is actually a very good price for the city, for the work that she's doing on a daily basis for us. That amount will be rolled into the party wall agreement and I anticipate bringing the party wall agreement to you for your review at the June 11th work session. The information has been shared with the other party in that agreement and so we will see where that goes forward. But actually, when it goes up to the $600 per month, half of that would be going to the second party in that agreement, half of that would be absorbed by us. Technically, what we'd have to do is, she has been deducting the amount from the, from the rent to this point. I've told her she's going to have to pay the full rent in the future, invoice us, we will pay the invoice and then we will re-invoice the other party when we receive, when we receive her invoice. So while that's going on, that's coming up for you and it won't technically come up till then. It was also part of the request and part of the information which I shared with you.
Mr. Redbell.
That actual rental increase and then her increase in the allowance, pretty much zeros it out.
For the first part, yes.
Yep.
So is it change, and forgive me, is it change in up to 600 not start till November then or does that start?
No, that will start, that will start in June. Because she hasn't raised her rate for the time that she's been in there, so she asked.
And Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We asked you to look into the appraisal of that building and possible.
Yes, you did.
Sale and different options. Does this in any way change that formula or change the environment?
I do not anticipate that this will change that environment. In order to go out for the appraisal, what I had to do first was get the party wall agreement in, in line so it's ready to be signed. We did not want to leave that issue hanging for a new owner. With the party wall agreement now coming to the city council, I would anticipate we'll be able to go out to the appraisal shortly so that then we can take the steps to market that building.
Thank you.
I think if you're delaying the increase in rental, you still have the lease agreement outstanding till 2021.
Yes.
You're still going to have the numbers or sort of value of looking at income value is going to be, not going to change.
Probably everybody remembers, but maybe to the newer ones, the party wall agreement is this common area maintenance and including the elevator and everything because that has been carried so much by the city and it's going to have to carry to the beneficiaries of it in preparation to maybe sell the building. So that's a good, he's shown good follow-through on that. It's not always an easy thing, but I think you're doing it right to get that set. It's all set in the table for maybe selling the building someday. Yep.
It, it's just a case of doing things sequentially so we don't have issues outstanding. It would make it more difficult to sell the building.
Any else have any questions for Mr. Gordy?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Review of community festivals, Mr. Golsdahl.
The last meeting, I believe Mr. Demers asked whether or not there was a legal description for community festivals. The statute doesn't define community festival, the case law doesn't define what a community festival is. Mr. Demers was kind enough to provide some information from the city of Fairbault, which I believe was included in the packet. Essentially, it's whatever the council would like to designate with some reasonable, with some valid, not arbitrary reasons for it. And you could then designate it as a community festival, could be Heritage Days, it could be Heritage Days Catfish Days, it could be any and all of the above or none. And to do so, then you would be able to host those with the service of, of alcohol in a more streamlined fashion than you have to do now to be able to get a nonprofit organization that has liquor, you know, to, to be able to do that. So it's really a discretionary call on behalf of the council.
Any questions with Mr. Golsdahl is putting in front of you?
Are we ready then to take that previous request and bring it to the full council for some sort of approval or aren't we quite ready for that, with that?
Well, if you would like to, I don't have the direction on which, if any festivals are, that you want to have as designated as that. So I think it's something that this group would want to make a determination of unless you're just going to go with Heritage Days now because it's before you and then, and then look at potentially expanding at a later date. There's a number of, there's a number of community, I guess, events that we do on a yearly basis that seems to have a fairly strong attendance by residents of both Grand Forks and East Grand Forks that you may want to include in that definition, but that would be this body's determination.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I don't mind moving forward with the, with the event that's, that precipitated this, with the understanding that we'll get to something ready for next January that would be, that would lay out what we want to do for the whole year. And I think that would give staff, I guess I should ask if that would give staff enough time to formulate the resolution, formulate the, the process of what we want to include, what our priorities are, what we want to constitute as being involved with this and then have it ready to roll out. Because we are, because we as a city aren't ready to roll it out, doesn't mean that we should penalize those people that could use this in the meantime, knowing that we're working towards something. If, if we could get some sort of agreement that that's the direction we want to go, I'm, I'm all in favor of moving forward.
I agree with the 12-month calendar and then also set the parameters of what would qualify. All right, so if you do get additional requests, you can hold up your parameters and say you're in, you're out.
Any else have any thoughts on that?
I just want to add that Heritage Days, when I was contacted by Terry, they don't have an issue moving forward this year using the catering license. She had emailed me, they were going to have a meeting, she was going to email me back and just let me know what they decided. So I mean, at this time, do you know anything else? She has not emailed me back, so I'm not 100% sure where things sit, but I was told they had no issue just using the catering license this year. So if this is just something that you guys want to consider and think about, it does not necessarily have to be acted on because they already know what is required to use the catering license, they're okay with those stipulations and they would just move forward with that. So I guess it just depends on what you. So I guess it just depends on what you guys would like to do at this time.
I think we can, you know, I think we can, like Mr. Demers said, I think allowing them to move forward as a community event, Heritage Days, I think we can designate that right away. I'd feel very comfortable doing that, to allowing that to happen, and going back and looking at it and getting together what we want to designate in the future. As indicated, when we brought this up before, you know, what constitutes as a community event, and what are we going to limit it to? So I think, you know, Heritage Days, I think we all are pretty comfortable saying that is a community event, and I think helping that process move along, I'm fine with that, personally. I don't know, anybody else feel the same way other than?
Yes, I do.
Maybe proposing, bring a resolution forward and let them, anything else on that? Okay. Consider approval of UTV ordinance, Mr. Galstead.
I had previously provided, well, UTV ordinance. I have still not been able to ascertain if there's any exemption process for state highways. I don't believe that there probably is. It's, it's that way for a reason. I did modify the UTV ordinance to include the equipment that was required or suggested. I do know that, and I didn't hand it out, I do know that Mr. Emery was kind enough to provide me with some information from the city of Green Bush that had an ATV ordinance that also includes UTVs and how they handle it. We could set it up similar to that. It's an application process like we have that goes through the, the city and the PD. They're, once they're permitted, all there is is a sticker that they've had made up that is placed on the UTV in a certain location, so it can be easily identified as a permitted vehicle. And their ordinance specifically has a renewal on a yearly basis. I know there was some discussion that that renewal could be every three years. I guess that's the, up to this group. And the other thing in their ordinance that I did notice was that the designated streets, or the streets that were not allowed, were primarily the, the state highway that came through, through, through the city of Green Bush. So it would, it would appear that they're following state rule there as well. I do know that Mr. Olsted asked if having a driver's license could just say valid license instead of a Minnesota license. I guess I don't have a problem with eliminating, you know, that as a definition. The one thing that I did bring up, though, was that whether or not you had a valid license or you had Minnesota, North Dakota, or otherwise, the UTV would have to be permitted in the city of East Grand Porches to be valid, to be driven in, on the streets. So they'd still have to, whoever's going to be driving it over here would still have to go through the permitting process.
Couple of things I have questions on, too, what the approval process in here, does it, does it, and this is my opinion, does it need to go to city council for approval?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Does the city council have to approve whoever's applying for the permits? I mean, city council, city minister brings it to city council for approval, or is that just on the ones that are being looked at differently?
Do we approve each and every application, or?
Well, typically, well, that's entirely up to you. Typically, what's happened with any permits in the past is that they've gone through, they go through an, a group or a process, and then they come to the city council for final approval. Whether, you know, whether you want to go through that route or not, you could designate it as the, the police chief or the city clerk, as long as the paperwork is, is, is in place. But there has to be a designated process.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Yep, so I, I mean, that's entirely up to you. This was, this was kind of fashioned in Grand Porches and the, a part of the UTV/ATV code that, that this, the League of Minnesota suggested.
Murphy?
Yeah, I guess I would say that, my recommendation would be for that, would be that's something that could be handled at the staff level. You just designate, I would suggest that either you designate both the chief of police and I to be able to sign off on those. That way, if one's absent, or one of the positions is vacant, or something like that, there's a backup.
One of the reasons I ask that is, you know, when we meet, so it'd be in between the council meetings, the timeframe would be pretty, you know, quite lengthy if someone's looking to get approval.
Yes.
So if they bought it, like, next Wednesday, they'd have to wait for the following council meeting to get, so that they get approved, and we'd be able to drive it.
Almost two weeks.
Yeah, so that's my reasoning on that. Didn't mean to make it confusing, sorry.
You just made a comment that summer could be over by then.
Yeah. Megan, did you have a comment, man? No? Okay. And we haven't talked about permit fees either. I mean, what, what true cost are we going to have into this that clearly we need to charge for?
Just the permits themselves, and of course, that's one cost. That's whereas, as Mr. Galstead was talking about, I was almost thinking a three-year permit that you appropriated the fee on might be the easiest way to go, because you could have a different color every three years rather than a different color every year. You know, then somebody gets it at whatever dollar figure you figure out, and then if they're buying it in the second year, they pay 2/3. If they're buying it in the last year, they pay 1/3 of whatever that cost is. Then at least they're not having to come in every single year. That's going to save time at the staff level, it's going to save expense from buying the permit decals, whatever they are themselves. That's just one idea. I mean, you can go either longer, but just three seems like a, to me anyway, seems like a reasonable.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just so I know, the permit, you're permitting the vehicle, or are you permitting the, the driver?
You're permitting the vehicle, but you're actually making sure that the person that owns the vehicle has a valid
But what happens if someone, or I guess that's up to law enforcement then to check. So part of this, I didn't, that was part of my question, is are we requiring them to purchase a decal that they affix to their, and display?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm fine with that, then. I'm fine with pretty much the entire thing, even with the prohibited areas, I think, for now. You can always have it prohibited, and if it just doesn't work, it really takes two weeks to, to change that, you know. I would say we should be able to issue these permits administratively. I don't think there's any reason for these to go to council. I don't, I really don't, unless there's something that's disputed, or maybe upon revocation, that would have to be voted on by council or something, but I really, I trust our staff, and I think it's, it doesn't need to, for the, just the time issues involved, it just makes no sense. I, I do want to do some more research on what that UTV insurance does, so I'll reserve a little bit of my right to, to object to it next week, depending my own research, but thank you.
The three-year fee, we can, we can propose something, so it's all been discussed in advance of the council meeting. Does anyone have thoughts on what the three-year fee should be?
And I love your idea of prorating it. So you all aren't looking for like three different colors of decals? At any given moment, there's only one decal color that's authorized at that time, and so you pay a 1/3 less if it's after one year, and then like that?
You don't have to do that, that was just an idea.
I think it's a great idea, because so you keep it simple, so you guys visually can say bam, that one's either current or it's not.
I mean, how many, I mean, you have a big roll of permits, how much, you know, how many are we really going to have?
Again, I think staff should, staff should go out, figure out what, what the permits cost, tell us what it's going to cost to administrate it, and figure out what that is per use, if we're going to have 20 of them or 40 of them, divide it out and
As far as staff, I, I'd recommend maybe doing something fairly nominal, sort of like we do with, with dog licenses and pet licenses and that, where it's, you don't want to get it prohibitive where people maybe wouldn't want to do it, or, or just for whatever reason. I think it should be, just my recommendation would be something fairly nominal, like say, $25 or something along those lines, just kind of covering a little bit of the time.
Per year.
Per year or for three years?
Well, I was thinking for the three years, but.
Why don't you have a, there you go.
$30.
It'd be divisible by 12. I was thinking $1,200 per year.
I was thinking 60 bucks for three years, just in the back of my mind.
What's a boat? 30? A boat?
I can't remember.
If they make it a registration fee, can we have it deducted on their taxes?
Probably not.
Clarence will find a way.
But 30 is fine for three? Anywhere in that range, I think, is good, just to cover our administrative costs.
Divide 24 by 3, too, if you want. By $3, divide by 3.
Probably divisible by 3. This sends a message, we're not trying to turn this into a profit center, we're just trying to have some proper control of what's happening here.
I don't know, I, I think, if we're going to move it forward, I think we need to justify what we're going to charge, actually.
With our own internal costs.
Right.
We can take a look at that, just kind of give you a rough idea what it would be.
Well, then, there's also the, the possibility that the police force is going to have to do, do a, basically a driving test at some point, because there's, there's the possibility that the individual is not able to get a driver's license for a medical reason, they get a doctor that says that, and they've got to determine whether or not they believe that they're safe to be able to operate it on the road without that license, so that's
I think we can tier that, though. Can we say if you have to have a test done by the police department, can say this is the fee then?
Or they could just say, if the medical doctor says you can't drive in a car, we're not going to, it's our opinion that you can't drive a UTV.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. That goes to the question, I think, Mr. Demers posed, are we permitting the vehicle or the person to drive the vehicle? So if you permit the vehicle, there could be three or four different people that are going to drive that vehicle around town.
I would think you'd have to have a valid driver's license to, to operate a UTV on city street. That would be my recommendation.
But there still could be four or five individuals driving that one permitted vehicle around town.
And that's okay. I mean, it's, they're, they're not hard to operate, it's a permitted vehicle.
But if you're talking about having to do, prove that you can drive it, different people might have to go through, and then we're back to my $1,200, because there's a big cost there, then.
And then you won't have to prove you can drive it if you're licensed to, to operate a motor vehicle, a regular driver's license. You're not creating that little window of, you can't get your license, but you can, right? So you can have visual impairment, you can have other things that, that prevent you from getting a driver's license, and it probably should prevent you from a UTV.
Got aye, Doctor?
Statutorily, the state of Minnesota allows it, so I'm not sure you can say that they can't.
State of Minnesota allows that special provision?
Yes.
Under what criteria? Because it's not just anybody and everybody.
Well, I will get that information for you, but it's right in the statute, with a doctor's note.
Anybody else have any questions on this, other than figuring the fee out? Mr. Helms?
I still have one question on the roads here that they can't be on, and the only thing, I'm, I'm okay with most of them, except for, I'm thinking about, Grand Porches has already got this system, and if we get this system, how are these units going to get back and forth, other than using the Point Bridge only, because they can't be on Demers Avenue?
32nd Avenue Bridge.
That'll be wet two months out of the year.
Mr. Helms, that was the question I brought up last time, and according, since Demers is run by the state, they don't allow it, but the bridge is technically, can you drive over the bridge and take a right or left there?
I think it goes from the center line myself, but, but I can't, I can't help that North Dakota laws are different than Minnesota laws.
I understand that.
Basically, you know, that's basically what it comes down to, is the state of North Dakota isn't in statutory or code form saying that ATVs and UTVs can't be on state highways. Minnesota says that.
When Business Highway 2 East reverts back to city on, where does that going to end? Is that going to end at stoplights at 4th, or where's that going to end, or is that going to end?
At stoplights at 4th.
So they'll have two blocks, the state will have two blocks there? That's it?
Well, yeah, because the state will then have from, basically from Highway 2 all the way to the Sorley Bridge.
We don't know for sure that's going to even happen.
Those are discussions we're going to have in July.
So let's not say it's, it's happening. Someone will lock onto that and say, well, you said it's going to happen.
Again, that's all things could be changed, it could be changed down the road.
But we've already had that.
Yeah, if there's
But if you look at the map, though, from 4th to Highway 2 is not prohibited.
If we get access to it, then we can change it.
That's why I'm asking the question.
From 4th to Highway 2, because that city right now, Demers Avenue, is city.
So are, so
He's saying from 4th into Demers, up to Highway 2, so like going past
Right down here.
City Hall.
No, 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 no. Coming off like Gailey, and then coming down to Demers, that section right there.
Then let's say if you take 4th to Highway 2, on the map, it's highlighted here.
Joan, yeah. Joan, Croft.
What, what do you, what specifically is the question?
That's city.
Here's my question, from 4th, going past City Hall to Highway 2, it's not highlighted on here.
Well, that's because it's, that's not Highway 2.
That's why I was confused when you sent that comment, that's why I want clarification.
Yeah, Highway 2 takes a right at 4th and goes out past
You're not, I'm the one that's confused, you guys. Because you confused me. So from 4th to Highway 2 on the map right now is not highlighted.
Correct.
Heading like east.
You made a comment when Demers all the way to this Highway 2 is going to be owned by the state. So is that
If the transfer If the transfer Right now, right out here, Demers Avenue is city, from the stoplights to Highway 2, is city currently.
So that trunk highway just comes in off of Business 2 and then heads over the Sorley Bridge?
Right. As long as you explain correctly now, I understand it, but, I mean, looking at, I didn't know that we were flopping that, not that it was just Highway
In theory, maybe.
So then what about 4th to the bridge, and is that state on that part of Demers yet?
Yeah, this is how it is.
Clear as mud.
Question about, does, can we require the UAT, UTVs to be
This right now is
Tires?
Not a part of Highway 2.
That, instead of mat tracks or something?
Ooh. It says four wheels.
Says four wheels. What, is there a definite, a legal definition of a wheel? I bet there's
Are you guys like overthinking this stuff to the max, or?
Talking about use of ease, ease of driving, mat tracks are good for some things, but they are more difficult to drive
Okay, let's go.
In this type of environment, I would say, and
Really good for off-road.
Unbelievable, I mean, but this is a road, this is definitely on-road.
I think the thing to do is to get it started, and then we can always tweak later if we have to.
You realize you're asking an attorney to come up with a definition of that, you know, they could argue for half a day on what defines a wheel.
You should start paying one by the ordinance.
That's unbelievable.
I'm just looking for...
I guess that would be the only other thing I would question is, we want these to be wheels, I don't care if they're radials or obviouls or whatever, but...
May I interject one other little thing? I feel like Columbo here. Mr. Galstead?
Yes.
When you do this point of clarification on individuals who may not drive an automobile but may drive something else, you're going to see it, it's going to run into things like golf carts and these UTVs, because right now we have made a provision for people to do golf carts.
We have a separate ordinance for that.
And I'd say that's kind of more there, right? So we're really, we really are doing just UTV only right now and the question of individuals who could not get a license, who could do this other, that stands apart from this, I believe, but still very important.
Okay.
Makes sense.
I'm going to send you the ordinance and I'll send you the statute, so then I'll put my comments underneath it.
But inside of this one, it should probably go toward the golf carts and the UTVs and if there would be any other category of motorized vehicle that they could use, it should, it should all be discussed in a, in a separate ordinance.
Okay.
I believe.
Any other input, accusations or confusing statements? All righty, I think you got everything, Mr. Galstead, that you need or directions from us?
We'll change it again next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
I'm just looking at...
Yeah, move on to number 10, request direction on 2020 budget.
Yes, yeah, there was discussion about starting this, you know, early summer, starting the budgeting process, so we're bringing this forward to see if there is any preliminary direction priorities, sacred cows, anything we want to bring forward when we start the 2020 budget process. Looking at any comments from the council. I guess one thing, can I just, before we start? We did receive word that the, there has been, was it the $30 million added to the LGA in the budget there. However, again, you know, no changes were done in the formula this particular year. So even with the additional money, we probably would lose money again in the, in the LGA. However, they did do a provision saying that no city can go backwards. So I guess starting off with 2020, the way it here looks now is that we would be getting the same LGA for 2020 as we got in 19, which isn't necessarily ideal, but at least is not going backwards like we have the last several years, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess one of the big things that I think we should start addressing in the budget is if we want to do something with the Civic Center, whether it's expansion, renovation, conglomeration with the VFW, we should start setting aside some money for, at least preliminarily for study. I would like to see that. Kind of on a side, I would like to start with a budget that in 2020, we aren't going to ask, where is this money coming from? And our answer is, oh, we already have that in there. You know, I, I think we've had a few cases this year where we've, we haven't decided on the policy direction, but we've already got the budget figured out, which makes it a lot easier to, you know, I just think that's already deciding what the policy is in some sense and putting that on the backs of, of residents and businesses. I, I just, if there's something that's preliminarily, you know, in, in staff's minds, in council members' minds, either bring it forth and have some sort of a formal, you know, okaying that this is going to go in the budget or don't include it and have to go into the budget and, or, you know, go in and have to deficit spend in that year for that thing that you said that, that hasn't been improved. I just, like I said, it's, it frustrates me when we come in and we say, well, we want this, well, it hadn't been, we hadn't really talked about it or decided, well, we already put it in the budget and then we're like fighting, well, yeah, no wonder why we've got all this extra money, you know? And there's always ways to finagle money and, you know, move things around or whatever, but when we, when we're told, well, this, we added this in and nobody ever really had a policy discussion on it other than we haven't decided, I think that's a tough way to start. So that would be my aside, not necessarily a specific item that I'd like to have added. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to know, we should approach the county to see what they're going to do with assessments this year. Are they going to hold them the same? Is there going to be adjustment? Are there a bunch of properties that are coming on this year that weren't on the tax rolls in prior years? Just to get a handle on some of that going forward. I would like to have us take a look at the fees that are currently on the Water and Light and see if there's a way that we can bring some of those fees off of Water and Light's bill and put them back into the general fund, general fund budget where they possibly belong. We should have a discussion as to the council members, are we comfortable with a 0% increase, 5% increase, 6% increase, just so that staff knows a target goal somewhere along the line? Coming up in the next month or so, I've asked Mr. Murphy to give us, if we were to proceed with a bridge on 32nd, what's the timeline? What do we need to do? What studies do we need to have done? Just put everything into place and put it on a timeline so that we have an idea of what we're up against. And once we have that, we might want to look at putting something in the budget to get one of those studies done or two of those studies done, just to get this project off the ground and get it going. So those would be some of the thoughts that I would have with our budget.
Thanks, I'll add, we've also been kicking around the idea of two big events in East Grand Forks, the fishing opener and potentially Hockey Day Minnesota. I know some staff have been working on kind of the preliminary works on that, but we should start putting some hard numbers to what the city's going to have to come up with, if anything. I guess, I don't know what we're anticipating for sponsorships, but even, you know, I know Water and Light's addressed some of the issues or we're working on some of the issues on, you know, placement and what it's going to cost if you do like a Hockey Day Minnesota for power and all those types of things, but starting to put some hard numbers on those type of events, if we're really serious about going after these, we should start putting money away now. Thank you. I sure agree with the thoughts shared on, on the budgeting and including individually, where are we as a comfort level for raising the tax levy on our residents? I sure got a lot of good feedback and, and again, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Murphy, the work and all the council that basically brought our reserves to target and now we're able to slow down a bit. You know, when you're trying to replenish those reserves, you have to raise taxes a little more quickly, get those reserves to target, which were there by most any standard and now able to kind of ride along at about the rate of inflation. Got a lot of great responses from residents who looked at their tax bill and saw maybe one to two to two and a half percent increase on that city line. Lot of good feedback, you know, they really appreciate being able to keep a few more of their dollars, especially on the heels of some little bit bigger increases. And I, so I think that's a thing we should all talk about. I know last year I threw out a number like five and then just with the loss of LGA and everything else, we bumped it to five and a half and that worked out great. I support that and something in that realm. To the idea of creating a fund for, and even to start some of the planning for Civic Center and the ice sheets, yep. And then also the fund for moving the plan along on, on a South End neighborhood bridge, also very important. You presented to me a dollar amount, close to $2 million for a very detailed plan that would be basically shovel-ready. And the trouble with that is you really don't have a funding source until you have a little more of a detailed plan. So you have to kind of ease into it and do steps of that plan incrementally. And it would sure be nice if whatever we do in the early planning stages, we had an equal buy-in from our friends across the river, whether it is the city, the county or whoever it might be over there that, even some federal dollars that of course would drop in for the project early on. It would be very important, I think, to get that form of buy-in from our friends across the river early on in a, in a South End neighborhood bridge. So I agree with all of it and if there is a way, I mean, there's a limit to how much we can set aside and still keep a lid on raising the taxes. But those are my thoughts.
With those things said, I think the biggest thing, you're going to know what you're looking at with the wages and then from there, you know, what you're going to be able to do and what you're going to be able to propose. So I think that's the biggest thing.
Yeah, we know what the wages will be next year. That's all been said.
Any other things?
One thing Nancy and I have even talked about is, you know, with the city, I guess I shouldn't say adopted yet because we're probably not to that point, but with having an ADA transition plan, you know, that's something the city, you know, they really don't put a specific timeline on it, but I mean, they do want to see you working towards, you know, those improvements, those upgrades to your sidewalks, your curb ramps, all of that. And, you know, one thing we talked about, kind of like every year, you know, you put in the budget to do so many, so much street replacement, maintenance type stuff. I think, you know, we probably got to look at that even from the sidewalks and the curb ramps because, especially the curb ramps, I mean, they can be very expensive and you don't get a whole lot done for, you know, even $10,000. So I think that's just something, you know, we got to start looking towards is, you know, having some dollars to be able to do some of those projects on a yearly basis.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Do have one thing. Tonight is George Wogum's birthday, seven, his private service. Tomorrow is his funeral on Buzzley United Methodist Church, so at 11 o'clock, just want to remind everybody of that. Mr. Wogum was a big part of City Council, EDA and other functions in the city for many years. So just wanted to remind everybody.
Isn't there visitation tomorrow that starts at 10? It wasn't starting out early?
Entertaining motion, George.
Who?
Who, Mr. Demers?
Second.
Anybody that are on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried, means...
A favor meeting upstairs?
Yep, conference room upstairs. Personnel committee meeting.